Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approval of the agenda. Anybody have any questions or anything in the agenda? Get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, with the additions noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Number four, public comment.
Len Brzezinski.
Good evening, school board.
Evening.
I'm in New Building Grounds. I bring about thirty years' experience here with the two-year district. My goal is to keep it built, clean, building, and good repair, and work with the plan in the school board to make it a better place, put out the fires, and keep rolling forward. So that's my goal also.
Awesome.
I'm liking it so far.
Well, welcome, yeah.
Thanks, Len.
Number five, presentation.
None.
Six, consent agenda. Six point one, approval of minutes. Six point two, approval of the May twenty special meeting minutes. And six point three, approval of personal contracts, reservation subs, and volunteers, other. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Number seven, financial. Seven point one, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, I didn't make any budget transfers just because we're getting to that time of the year. After we calculate all the teacher payoffs, I'll probably make budget transfers then. But the bottom line, we're at eighty-four percent, and last year at this time, we were at eighty-five percent. Questions?
You did well.
Sure.
Seven point two, approved treasures report for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Currently have a cash balance of ten point five million, which is good. Last year at this time, ten point one million.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasures report?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point three, approve twenty twenty-three A bonds treasures report for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we currently have a cash balance in this account of two point eight million. Any questions?
My only question, that's basically just going to sit there until the roofing project starts next spring.
Collecting some interest.
Okay. Can you get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point four, approve regular bills for June. Anybody have any questions going through the regular bills for June? I didn't see them, I didn't see them coming up, let's get out. Can you get a motion to approve the bills for June?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point five, approve high school activity bills for June. Are there any questions on these? Can you get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven point six, approve twenty twenty-three A bond bills. What do we have, Jackie?
I don't have it right now. I can look on it. It's...
It's just TSB.
Oh, it's our...
Yeah.
Three TSBs.
Any questions on these?
That's from the...
Architectural.
The plan where that was all done. We got the thumb drives.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Is this the last of them?
Yep, this should be the last of it.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, eight point one, board members report.
We had a policy meeting, as you can see, we had a busy policy meeting. Went through a lot of policies. Most of them were statute, descriptions, and some statute changes. We did kind of talk about where we want to go with the cellphone, you know, usage by our students and that type of thing, and that's something that Dr. Ralick sent out. As far as, didn't we? There was a thing on the email, just to look over the policy. Because we thought that the whole board should have had their thoughts on that, instead of just three of us.
Even with that, would it make sense to have like a work session?
We could, and I'm hoping that through media outlets, we can make people aware that this is a conversation we're having on, do we completely ban cellphones in the school? Do we allow latitude for an individual teacher to make a determination whether or not they use a cellphone? Do we allow for access of passing time? I mean, there's a number of things that we talked about in the policy subcommittee, just saying that this is a this is a pretty big conversation, and we know that some districts are tating a hard line, saying the cellphone is checked at the door when you come in, and you can access it during passing time, and that's it. Anything else is a violation. And we do know that some teachers have utilized cellphones in their classrooms. The question that came up in the policy subcommittee is how essential is that, knowing that we're a one-to-one district? So is it really essential to have access to cellphones, knowing that we have the technology tools in the hands of kids already? So again, probably something we do want to have a little work session on, just to get a little research and have some conversation.
And how to support staff?
Yeah.
How to enforce it and how to support staff? We talked about that. Because I think that's a big part of it.
Yeah.
And I was just in the last week, I saw that there was a big thing at National News. I forget, was it U.S. state? There's someone who's there going after, I think so, taking cellphones. I don't remember the exact state, but it was...
Well, and how we, and we talked about how to get parents on board with changes if we do change. You know, like how to talk to them about it and...
I think if you take them away totally, you're in for a big war.
I think so too. We talked about that thing. Yeah.
I'm not saying I'm for it.
I would agree, but...
You gotta have a, try to get a happy meeting.
Yeah, what's the right sweet spot?
Yeah.
I would agree.
We talked about just...
Yeah, I suppose.
Moving on to eight point two, superintendent's report.
All right, just a few items, as was already referenced. Tremco is going to be on site, I believe, later on this week to take a look and do their assessment. And then from their assessment, they'll put together a plan of attack to address the roof. Last we had heard, they're still very optimistic in the bid climate because of the mild winter that we had. So there are companies that are looking for work, so that's good news. So we'll see how that comes together. And they said they compile a report and have it ready to share back with the board. So that's a pretty important one. Along with that, we had signed property insurance, and our coverage had been dropped by Liberty Mutual. And we had been looking hard, working with Kozlowski's, and they actually found an agent. I guess there's different scales of agencies, and it's a larger agency called the Main Street, First Main Street Insurance, located in Iowa. They partner with EMC to provide property and casualty insurance. And we actually saw a decrease in our insurance rates, which was positive, because we're among a seven-county area in southwest Minnesota that's deemed to be a high risk for wind and hail damage, even though over the last five years, I think we've had one claim on anything, which was kind of fascinating. But because of the designation, Liberty Mutual was dropping us. And while other districts around the area saw increases of twenty-five to forty thousand dollars, our costs actually went down. I believe close to twenty-five or thirty thousand the other direction, so that's positive. And good coverage. EMC is a very reputable provider and company, so we're really excited about that. I know that there were some questions early on about Title IX training for staff. We're not going to be able to do that during our workshop week. If you recall, when we set the calendar this year, we actually had to carve one day off of workshop week. And in order to still provide staff some opportunities to work in their classrooms, we're going to have to push that Title IX training. We're still committed to doing it, but we're going to have to push it back a little bit. I think it's just a high priority that we still have to adhere to. We just don't have time in the couple of days that we have as we start the school year out. So that's something that we'll be working on. Couple other things that you can project into the future in terms of some agreements that will be brought before the board. We met with Southwest Health and Human Services to talk about an MOU between the school district and their agency for the collaborative. For all the years that the collaborative has existed, there hasn't been any sort of formal agreement. And we know that that's pretty important, given that we're looking at student data, the survey information. There's individual contacts with students, so we should have something formalized that memorializes that agreement officially. So we're working on that. And then also, our current law enforcement officer agreement is set to expire October thirty-first, so we've already initiated some conversations with the county, just saying, hey, we need to get that in place so that as we look towards the months of August or September, ideally at the latest, we can have a new agreement in place. I think it's worth having the uniformed officer present in the district. It just adds to our safety and security protocols and processes. So we're positive that we'll have that done, and there's interest in continuing that relationship. And then one last thing I'll just share is that strategic planning work is something that I know our current strategic plan is set to expire in twenty-five. So it's time to start thinking about our strategic plan, and we actually baked that partly into that grant that I informed the board about earlier. And so we've started to reach out to a couple of different organizations that help with that type of work, and really centering it on what we call a profile of a graduate or a portrait of a learner, so that we can sit with groups of students, staff members, community members, and board members, and have a conversation, what do we expect the graduate from Pipestone Area Schools to know and do and be able to accomplish after they are done with graduation? And kind of then backward design from there what the vision is to what we're doing in terms of the educational process and classrooms. So pretty intense process, but I think it'll give us a really good model for what we want our school to do going forward. I know our last strategic plan, it was a good effort, but I think there were some real disconnects in terms of some of the goals, the metrics, and I think there was some real needs to get staff a little more involved in that process. So that's what the goal is with this. So those are just a few of the things that I like.
Any questions for Clint?
Clint, you mentioned staffing as far as struggling the special ed teachers side of things. What is the, what is the plan there? Are we changing up plans to try to find and fill those positions?
Yeah. Couple of things that we've been working on with that, particularly with the service cooperative. We've had a couple of paraprofessionals that have signed up for this pipeline grant, which will help them complete credits and work towards their degree. And I think we have two paras that have signed up for that, I believe, right now. So that's a couple of other potential opportunities. We're continuing to advertise, and we're probably going to have to look at hiring some out-of-field placements again to fill into that position. And we met with our new special education director today. Tish is not going to be with us. She's been reassigned to some other districts, kind of more to the north. She'll be heading up towards Ortonville Way. That's her most northerly district that she'll be working with. So our new special ed director, we actually visited with her about that today, just the mentoring and support that she can provide, as well as the service cooperative as a whole, as we look towards the reality of having to do some out-of-field placements. Just isn't a pipeline, and that's a huge issue right now. And I think there's some information out there that just indicates the likelihood of special education teachers to leave the field. It's pretty high, and for them to even leave a district is pretty high. We even talked today about increasing the number of paperwork days potentially to provide some added supports. And I think we just are going to have to be real creative going forward and thinking about how we might be able to incentivize and support special education teachers or those that may be interested in pursuing a special education licensure. And if those incentives include monetary incentives, I think we're going to have to look at that, just because again, we're...
But it sounds like a statewide, I mean, a nationwide thing.
It's a state-nationwide issue, really.
I mean, it's not like it's just us are just...
Right.
How do we keep the cooperative from torturing? That's a good question.
Well, but it's just discussion.
No, it is. And I hesitate to say because it's a market-driven game right now, and...
And the other discussion is, if we use this grant money to help educate them, are they obligated to be here for a while then? Or...
Yeah, it's a cooperative grant, it's a grant through the service cooperative.
So they're part of it, so we can, these pairs can get all the training, we can send them to school.
And they could...
And then the next year, they can go to the cooperative.
Jump ship, yeah.
And that's a hard thing.
Yep.
What do you do? I mean, there is no...
And I guess the good news is, by doing that, we're still adding to the pipeline overall.
Hopefully you incentivize them enough to stay in through the material.
Exactly, through other means, yeah.
Do we have any efforts of going out to other, to all their special ed teachers in other districts and trying to bring them in?
We advertise, we haven't picked up the phone and called individuals yet, but I think we're going to have to start doing that, just because again, it's the shortage. And even talking to some people, and we haven't done this, looking at who might hold a licensure in special education that's on staff right now in the district, because we may have some licensed fed staff members, and talking to them about the possibility of doing an assignment change. I know some staff members have said, if I'm assigned to special education, I'm out of here. You know, on that.
Well, that, one of the attachments you had sent out, yeah, I think, what, like seventy-four percent of... I forget what term you used.
Fed special education teachers are more likely to change districts.
But the teachers that you bring in that aren't a special ed teacher.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Those are the ones that are out of here. You know, so it's like, well, boy, really don't want to do that.
Exactly, 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 and that's...
When I feel like it's, you really have to want to be a special ed, I mean, you just do. It takes a lot of extra patience and a lot of understanding and...
And the complexities have changed.
Yeah.
The conversation that we had today was just the number of behavioral issues that our special education teachers are addressing and trying to support the general education teachers with, because those behavior issues don't stop at the special education threshold. They carry into the classrooms and our...
It's an ongoing matter.
It is, it is, and...
This will be an ongoing battle this year.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're, a little bit of good news, and not that this is the right solution, but it's part of the solution. There was a time when the ELC for the co-op was capped off at the number of students that they were accepting anymore, simply because they were running into staffing issues. They have hired some additional staff, not ours for this position, but they've hired some additional teachers, so there is some capacity back through the ELCs, which is a good thing. But again, it's, that's for some of the worst-case scenarios, students that we have. And I know this is a conversation that keeps Jennifer Morvitz up at night, because she's told me as much multiple times. It's just, it's a huge issue. So to your question, Tyler, I don't have a great answer. I wish I had a better solution, but I don't. And it's just, we're going to keep trying.
Any other questions for Clint? Were you animus to the staffing besides this?
I think we're sitting pretty good, aren't we, Dan? I think we're sitting pretty good.
That's really the only reason, but that's good.
They don't, she says you still have no math teacher.
And the math is the other one, yes, yes.
High school?
Math at the high school.
Is that the only thing left at the high school? In special ed?
I don't...
You're not sure?
It's just art, maybe two, um...
Shoe, yeah. Last I checked, it was the special ed, the math.
I'm just updating.
I don't know about data.
Elementary special ed, elementary special ed parents, well, math, and that's what high school special ed teachers is.
So also with you, so it's just those, just special ed math. All right. Tell a friend.
Tell a friend.
Opportunities in Pipestone.
Moving on, number nine, discussion items. Nine point one, first reading of the twenty-four, twenty-five Little Arrows Preschool Handbook.
Jennifer, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this, or...
No changes in this.
Pretty minimal.
I would say I didn't see any.
Pretty minimal.
I just see one, it was very minimal, I think, just forgot the word fee after quite a while later.
Where?
Um, I don't know what paper.
Doesn't seem...
Tuition, must be under tuition.
Right there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I can't on this, but I can change it.
Since this is the first reading, now we can make that modification.
Any other comments? Again, that's the first reading. So nine point two, first reading of the twenty-four, twenty-five Elementary Handbook.
I don't have a attachment for it.
I didn't have a attachment.
That's the one I didn't have a attachment for. I didn't know if it's supposed to, but I just, I see them.
Let me pull it up for you.
On this one, Jen, do you want to comment on any?
There's really not much changes in here, some little minor ones. I guess kind of the biggest one is just having only our guests in the building that they have to come in and check into the raptor system, that's the biggest one. But I mean, address code, yes, and address code, yes. A little bit of a school.
What are we?
Cars. Some minor ones reduced.
Obviously five old quarters, which is the glass itself for... I'm not sure.
Just visitors coming in, they keep their driver's license, and they throw the badge, and they, we usually take their badge and...
I can send this to you.
Just the first reading anyway, right? So what do we still...
Yeah, I'll send that to you.
We've had very few issues with that raptor approach in the high schools, so it's worked well. Only one instance last year where somebody didn't want to turn in their driver's license, but then we worked through that. That was an interesting exchange. The gentleman had had his security compromised at some point in time, and he was concerned that by leaving his badge at the, the driver's license at the front desk...
I thought you just ran it through the system, like you ran it.
Well, you do, but then we leave it so that they return their badge that they get.
Oh, it's not just a sticker?
And then they get their license back, yeah. Yeah, well, they do, yeah. It's a sticker, but they return that.
Gotcha.
And we know that they're not the one.
Yeah. Part of our whole process.
I see.
But we were able to work through that, so...
Any questions on this? Do we want to copy a little bit? Thanks for clarifying changes. Nine point three, first reading of the twenty-four, twenty-five Activity Handbook.
Again, really minimal changes. You can see the updates to some of the coaches. There's a couple of blanks where there are coaches left to be filled in. But for the most part, this is very similar. Yeah, very similar to what you have adopted previously.
Did Tyler convert your chair from head coach? I love that that was on the location. He's still up there in the classroom. He was supposed to come in. Well, we're asking after.
Who operating about a baseball team?
I'm happy. There was, um, current.
Yeah, it was good, this year.
Just after the season?
Yeah.
Ah, I missed that.
Yep.
I was thinking, like, baseball season?
It's done.
It's done?
It's done.
High school season's done, yeah.
Any questions on the Activity Handbook? Okay. Moving on. Nine point four, first reading of Policy four oh six, Public and Private Personnel Data. Four ten, family and medical leave. Four thirteen, harassment and violent inform. Five oh six, student discipline informs. Five oh seven, corporal punishment and prom restraint. Five oh seven point five, school resource officers. Five fourteen, bullying, prohibition...
Prohibition.
Prohibition. Five fifteen, protection and privacy of pupil records inform. Five twenty-four, internet acceptable use and safety informs. Five thirty-four, school meals. Six oh one, school district curriculum and instruction goals. Six oh three, curriculum development. Seven oh eight, transportation of non-public school students. And eight oh six, crisis management policy. Can you guys have a discussion on all these?
Yeah, most of them are just either descriptions or statute, statute changes.
If you want to read what was left in the self, who's this? Now, once again, they have updated type twenty-four, and they're doing all of this. This was a suggestion in your eyes.
Oh, right, right. Well, it might be, I mean, I don't know. I think it would be important to know, because to me, what's the point of us making a policy if it's not going to be enforced? So I feel like that's a discussion that you either need to have with the principals, or the principals need to, you know, like be part of that discussion of the work session. I mean, that's how I feel about it. You know, I mean, it's only, I mean, the policy's only a policy on paper. If you don't enforce it, it's not, it's not going to, you know...
Right. And that comes back to ensuring that it's a policy that's equally enforceable.
Right, right. And that's the thing, yeah, that's what I mean.
It has to be consistent.
It has to be consistent.
The residual impact of.
I agree.
Repercussions, if somebody lays down the law and somebody disagrees that, yeah, that it's enforced and enforceable, so.
Okay, again, these were first readings of these policies.
Would it be helpful at the work session to ask as well, or some of the, because each principal has a leadership team of teachers, just to?
Yeah, I think so, to get feedback and.
That would be the time to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
We can have open discussion and.
Yep.
I, I think, you know, open discussion is good, I think everyone has, you know, in today's day and age with cell phones, you know, for bullying and, and just the capabilities on it. Our goal should be to get cell phones under control.
Yeah, in the extent that we can, exactly.
And be consistent.
Right. Make that note to some leadership team members.
How many are fresh?
Yeah.
Good. Give the first reading of these policies. Okay, moving on, number ten, action items. Ten point one, resolution accepting donations to high school activities. We had, um, the Booster Club. Did two separate donations, they're up there. One for eight sixteen twenty-eight for portable soccer tennis nets, on court, on court rebounding nets. And then another one for seven ninety-eight ninety-eight for spotted block and adjustable height parallel mounts, bars. I'd like to thank the Booster Club for this donation. They're, um, they're always very supportive of our activities. Can I get a motion to accept these donations to the high school activities?
Some.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point two, approve food service management contract and MOU with Tahoe.
Yeah, so, um, as you recall, at our last meeting, we were, we received the authorization to pursue the contract agreement with Tahoe Foods. And they had vetted through the process, and we, we did a complete vetting of the different bids that were received, they were the best bid for us financially and based upon the criteria that we had. So we received a contract, there were very few changes that are allowed because it's a contract that comes from the State Department of Education, but we did run it through Pemberton just to make certain that the district's interests were covered. And one of the things that was brought forward was a suggestion on indemnity, if there was somebody from their organization that fell and got hurt in the kitchen or cut off a finger, that it didn't impact the school district, that it was on them as the provider. So we have that clause in an MOU, and then equally, we have a termination agreement, which we didn't have before. So this allows us, if there's a, some sort of a termination agreement, if for one reason or another that things aren't going the way that we anticipate they will, we have a termination clause. So the MOU talks about the termination clause, and then the contract itself, again, I think you've seen that, so those are the things that were brought forward and recommending that we move forward with it.
And Tahoe already?
They're, yeah, they're good, yep, yep, they, they, in fact, when I brought this to them, they said, yeah, we wish that those options were still in the old food service agreement, but we can't make those modifications, so we worked together to come up with the MOU, and they agreed to it.
The central part of July card too.
All right.
Very nice.
All right, any questions on the, on the Tahoe for food service contract? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some.
All together.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point three, approve obsolete banned items. Uh, the list is up there on the screen. Zach, I went through it, looks like just broken, unfixable items. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve obsolete banned items?
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point four, resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy.
Not really, I think it's just a pretty straightforward process, it's, it's time to start thinking elections. And as you can see here, this just lays out the timeline on moving things forward, what would happen, how it would proceed, and what the filing deadline is to proceed. You can see that it's August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, if it's approved, starting July thirtieth of twenty-four, and don't forget your two dollar filing fee.
Can I get a motion to approve, um, these filing dates for candidacy?
Some.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point five, resolution relating to reelection of school board members and calling the school district general election.
It's in conjunction with the general election date of Tuesday, the fifth of November, twenty twenty-four, and this would just establish that we would be completing our election process for school board members in conjunction with that general election.
Who's, who's all up for reelection?
Me.
Four. Four up, right.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some up.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point six, education, identity, and access management board resolution.
Well, this is one of those flaming hoops that you have to jump through to meet MDE requirements, you have to name who your person is, that it will serve as the education, identity, and access management person, and it's naming me. Allows for us to keep moving forward accordingly, utilizing this electronic system that, um, that they have, and by doing it, it creates the Iowa, which is the individual official with authority. So, um, it's again, one of those things that we just need to do in order to access and manage the state MDE systems.
Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some move.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point seven, approve garbage and recycling proposal for twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
We had one bid that was submitted by the deadline that was established at a previous board meeting, so that's what you have here this evening, board members, is the sole bid that were received by the, by the published deadline.
Has it gone up from last year? Okay, I was thinking it was a little lower than that.
Pretty significant.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Any other discussion?
Do we have to take it?
I thought you did, really.
Yeah, it means it's the day.
Yep.
But it's all done, I'm glad.
Yeah, but we, we wait with the end of the building, if you can. But deadlines are done.
Yeah, you'd have to read. How much, as of advertising, that's two hundred dollars per. I'm just saying, it's probably more than you think, too. It eats up. I move to approve the garbage contract and recycling contract for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year for it with the city of Pikeston.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side.
Aye.
Aye.
Did I ask for that? Is that a one-year contract? A lot of companies don't, like Wisconsin, they're doing a five-year contract for eighty, eighty.
Five-two, motion passes. Ten point eight, approve membership to MSBA for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, board members, you see this, uh, membership as well as MREA, and the next one to come following that would be the Minnesota State High School League. It's a great partnership that we have, very supportive of school boards, and we know MREA, very supportive of rural education and, and does a lot to advocate for rural schools. And the high school league, obviously, for various reasons, we want to be a member there, so as you look at these next three, they're all just the standard membership that we would maintain with the school boards association, rural education association, and the high school activities league. So rather than pausing for each one, I just thought I'd share the membership experience with all of those.
Can I approve them all at one step? I'd entertain a motion to approve the membership to MSBA, MREA, and the Minnesota State High School.
Some moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold same side, motion passes.
For the high school activities league?
Did I, did I do it? Was it a while ago? Oh, then I think I did, but if it was this last couple of weeks, then no. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I did.
Okay.
Yes, I'm.
Yeah, I signed it too, so it should be good.
Yeah, I say, I think I did it, but it was.
We both have our signatures on it, but we don't know if either one is signed, but that's, that's what's really odd, so.
No, I, it was.
We can follow up with them.
If it was in May, if it was a while ago, yes, I did something with someone, like, because I think you sent me.
It's a docu-sign.
Yes. I think I did that, yeah.
It's a docu-sign, we can follow up with it.
Our work is never done, dude.
So, moving on, ten point eleven, approve twenty-four, twenty-five literacy plan.
Well, this is an annual requirement that we have, you notice that by June fifteenth each year, we're, we're required to submit a plan, and ours is with the asterisk that it's pending board approval. As you can see at the top of the list, and I know that this is something that Jennifer and Lisa P. spent a considerable amount of time going over, tying it back to what we're doing and the requirements that we have for universal screening, which is part of the READ Act, that there's screenings three times a year, and then parent notification of when those screening results are shared with parents. What we're doing with core instruction for reading, again, tying it back to the READ Act, and then the multi-tiered systems that supports MTSS, that's what that stands for. In other words, what are we doing for interventions and processes for intervention, and then we had to incorporate things for professional development in the plan as well. So, um, it's all incorporated here, ready for board approval and consideration, and we are required to publish this to the district website and, excuse me, report a link back to the Department of Education. I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add, Jennifer, or comment on.
Any questions or discussion? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some moved.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion passes. Ten point twelve, approve fiscal year twenty-five budget.
And it looks like Jackie's gonna be handing some things out.
You can call me if you want to.
This, this was vetted through the, uh, the finance subcommittee of the board and, um.
They're probably all in my bag. The other meeting.
Okay, so we had a budget meeting, I don't even know where I think we got that.
Last week.
Last week, sure.
Tuesday, last.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I think it was Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, so we went over that then, and this is the same format I use every year, so projecting a one point five million dollar loss in the general fund. This is a budget, I'll revise everything in January, February, it's conservative estimate, I mean, I think we all knew we were gonna be in this situation with, I mean, we, one, two, three, four, we hired five new physicians. We retained the six positions that we don't have overfunding for anymore, and then with the salary increases, so it doesn't surprise me. Then the next page would be all your revenue, and please, everyone look at this closely, if you see something odd or whatever, I'll go back and do the research, because I'm not saying that I haven't made an error, I don't think I have, but go ahead and look at it, and please ask questions. So this first page is a revenue basis comparing the revised budget for this year to the new budget for this year, and then the differences. And I go through this, I look at them, and if there's anything large, I make sense out of it. And then I go back and say, wrong, maybe I messed something up. And the next two pages are the general fund expenditures.
And Jackie, this is projecting a decline in student enrollment, a, a big small.
Students, it's small, it's a small decline.
So that's reflected, obviously, in the per pupil count on the revenue side.
Yeah.
Yep.
And like I said, if anyone wants more detail, I've got three binders full, if anyone wants to come into my office and I can, I'd be more than happy to sit down with anyone.
Just in the conservative approach to budgeting that Jackie does, which I think is great, because it, it positions us really well. We know we have our fund balance, but we also have a contingency plan in place, as you see on the last page, the expenditures of a hundred thousand dollars, so again, that just gives us some options if indeed we run into a situation, so.
And when I did hand out at the budget meeting, I did an analysis to see where we would be as far as our fund balance percentage, that was established by the board. So I do have that, and you're looking at your estimate upon estimate, we were still like at twenty-four point six, and that'd be the worst case scenario. And, uh, fund balance policy established by the board is between twenty-five and thirty-four percent, so you should still be within the fund balance policy if, if this year ends up being the worst case scenario, and next year ends up being the worst case scenario, which it's not going to.
Like your options.
You know, one, one question, Jackie, because I went through a few of these with you now.
Yep.
I, I don't, I don't remember what, what was the projected deficit last year?
For this year?
Like this time of year, and last year when you handed these out, do you remember where, where you started? Or is it like a?
Oh, I, I don't know, are you talking about fiscal year twenty-three, because that's the only, that's the only year right now we have any actual for. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but, no, I guess.
So the what was projected?
Where I started in July, and then where I revised it. It was only about a hundred thousand dollar difference. I think I went from four hundred and forty to five hundred something, but.
This year, if you can work your magic and end up with that smaller amount with all the teacher.
Yeah, that was it.
There it is.
Yeah, but then the revised one was, well, you're gonna have to do your math. I can tell you. Revised one was. Revised was a negative five twenty-one, seven, seven, eight. So not that big a difference.
And then where we end up with actual is.
Right, right, and then where we're running, so like when you, earlier you shared, you know, we're at eighty-four percent, and last year we were eighty-five.
Right.
So we're running under.
Right.
Compared to prior year.
Yeah, and we should be okay. Special ed driving noise always a big. But I've always gone, you know, when I'm conservative on that, too, it's never gone the other way.
Right.
So. But.
Keep working your magic. Any, any questions for Jackie?
And like I said, if anyone wants to, I, I am a pretty good educator if I actually do it, if I sit down and try.
Any willing pupils?
We're adding to the short call, short call picture. She does. She's been great. She's been great.
On that note, can I get a motion to approve the budget?
You wanna look at the other ones? Have you guys had a little? Next one is High School Activities, and this is just a fund, like for each individual, this is basically they spend, and then, I mean, they can't, they can't go into a deficit anyway.
It's just an in-and-out thing.
Yeah. There's the detail of all the High School Activity accounts we have. Food Service Fund, that's showing a less deficit or less of a revenue increase, which is good. I, I sent them a little letter trying to justify our large fund balance, and they haven't gotten back to me, so I may have swept it under the teeth a few years, basically saying that we're going through a different type of contract, and also it costs us more, I think, because we really had no way in, prior to this time, to.
Spend down, yeah. And the other nice thing, this last legislative session, they passed that we can utilize fund reserves in the food service to buy like food service tables and some of that furniture that goes along with the child nutrition services, where before it was just the kitchen equipment itself, but now you can do some of that furniture.
Cafeteria?
Cafeteria tables, benches, yeah. Cafeteria benches, yeah. So we have some flexibility, and I know, we talked about this last year at the School Board Convention, where we have some little delamination going on with some of the surfaces of the cafeteria tables. So if we need to update some of those, we have some options to do that. Yep.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Imagine that.
So basically, I did the same thing with the food service. I'm comparing the twenty-four budget, twenty-four revised budget to the twenty-five budget, and everything looked okay. Then when I went through the numbers, I was looking at Toddler's proposal, they're pretty much close on everything, so it should be fine. Community Ed, okay, so. This is just, basically, the community ed programs have to go in and out, too. Like if a teacher decides that they want a program, they basically will get paid for what they bring in. And Drivers Ed goes through Community Ed, and then you're gonna have, you get a little bit of a levy, which covers then the director's fees. And then we donate money to the after-school program, to the summer rec programs, to the city of Pikeston. Which we've done that every year since I've been here. Any questions on that? Okay, the next one is also part of the Community Ed umbrella, but it's our preschool program. This is showing projected expenditures over revenue of seventy-six thousand. However, we have not found out about voluntary pre-K yet, because I guess they stated, no, don't say it, Jackie. Okay, anyway. So what we do, I know about voluntary pre-K, this will not be a deficit. Yeah, forget the voluntary pre-K, which I don't have any reason to believe why we would.
They added over five overseats, so.
But I can't put that in here because.
And we were always on hold.
Right on the edge all the time, yeah.
Because I have not been notified yet that we have received it, so therefore it's not in here. So.
Well, that's what we were told.
When I emailed them in May, they told me June. So August, I don't know. But I don't know when we'll find out. But then this will be revised in January or February, so I don't know why we won't get it. The next one is Early Child and Family Education, which we have a large surplus in. Next one, Building Construction Fund, and this basically, I just went through, we have the resurfacing of the track on here, and then the roof replacement, and then it was in here. And I kinda went through the critical timeline that gave us the last, no, they gave us the last one, and these are estimates, obviously. That's what that is. Next one is Debt Service. This is an easy one. Basically, you're able to levy for your debt, and that, I'll break people's. Are there any questions? If you think of any questions later, email me, let me know.
That is it.
Pretty good.
Can anybody have any questions for Jackie? Want to have anything to add?
No, just, the only thing I would say is the COVID positions that, that Jackie referenced, you saw that list early on, and I couldn't imagine how we could run the school district if we didn't reinstate those positions. So it's just a reality that those, those needed to be baked back into the general fund accordingly, and so we have, and obviously, we're gonna keep a close eye on everything, because it's a big deal, and I know that we've grown our fund balance over the last several years, and this will take it down a little bit, but I think, again, it's all part of the stabilization after we come out of the COVID, release funds that we receive, so.
And then once the audit is done for this year, I mean, by the end of November, I'll know how we actually turn out, so then we'll actually have another piece of information that's factual, that's actual, not an estimate, and something you'll have.
Yeah, have a better idea of where we're gonna land.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve the budget?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. Ten point thirteen, consider approval of solar field partnership with Sioux Valley.
So we did kind of a committee of the whole at the last meeting that we had with Sioux Valley coming and presenting, and this grant that they've applied for to help fund the project really means no expense out of the district's pocket. We've asked questions about maintenance, we've asked questions about insurance, we've asked questions about safety and security to ensure that, that the site is protected. We've been told that they're going to fence it. It's, it's going to generate, albeit a small amount, some energy that will go over to the school district and support us. It's really a benefit for the electrical company as well in terms of trying to increase their green footprint, and it ties into the old infrastructure that we have from the decommissioned wind turbine that was installed several years ago. You know, the question had come up earlier, too, about the placement location. In that committee meeting when the board met, kind of a work session of the whole, we were quite insistent that it not be at the front entrance, that it be back away out of, you know, the sight lines of the school, so that's been agreed upon as well. So really, it's pending our action moving forward and signing the documents this evening that we would initiate the process, and it sounds like it would be a twenty-year term with the, with the agreement that we have in front of us, and anticipation of operations would start as early as November one of this year. So they would initiate the process relatively soon, again, pending action tonight of the board.
Do you remember if they ever told us what was underneath them? Is it rock underneath them? Is it grass? Is it?
I don't recall that. That's a good question.
I thought about that afterwards, if we're, you know, are we gonna be able to have to mow? Okay, so yeah, it does look like there's rock. That's what I was wondering about mowing and, and.
Maintain it.
You know, like around it. And is it gonna cause any snow issues?
Shouldn't cause any snow issues, especially where it be seeded.
It's not gonna blow like a, make a big.
Really, it should help. Stop, stop the drought.
So I guess I have one question on number six on the maintenance.
In the MOU?
Yeah.
Oh, in the MOU, okay.
So it says, we'll provide the annual maintenance inspection of the solar generation. Maintenance cost will be paid by PAS.
Not by PAS, it should be SVA.
Well, that's.
Yep.
Good catch. Yeah, I didn't see that either.
There's another spot up where it talks about the payment. So it lists out the fifty percent grant, thirty-five percent, once it commences, and then the fifteen.
Where, where you at, Tyler?
Sorry.
Number three.
Number three.
Okay.
Unless it's in the MOU.
Okay, yep.
So it, it sounds like to me, are we gonna have to foot that bill, or half of it, through stages then? So fifty percent.
I thought my understanding was that we would pay it and they would reimburse, right?
That, yes, because it was zero cost to the district.
But I, but that's what I'll, how I understood.
How long are we holding those dollars together for them?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I can't see that.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to clarify.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason that, because from the understanding, when, when they're going through the presentation, and I cannot for the life of me find where I had noted, but I thought I had gone through calculation of it, and then making what, a couple thousand dollars a year is all?
Yeah, it was very minimal.
And so it's like.
What's the risk to report?
Is, yeah, is this worthwhile?
Well, and I'm really hesitant about it, just because the whole windmill thing. Very hesitant about it myself.
Meaning?
Well, it costs a lot of money for us to get rid of that windmill.
To decommission.
And there was a lot of, and there was, I mean, I just felt like that was supposed to be this.
But actually, we actually came up with that.
The windmill paid very well.
Yeah. And we never had. And it was like.
First contract.
Yeah, it was a grant from Excel, and we never had to pay anything to build that windmill.
Right.
And then we were getting back, we were saving like between seventy-eight and eighty-four thousand dollars.
A year.
A year on our, like, rate costs. So initially, it was good. You came in on the bad end of it.
The problem, the problem came.
No, but that's, that is valuable data.
Yeah, it is.
There was two, there was two problems with the windmill. One was our contract expired, and the new contract is gonna be like a percentage of what the original contract was.
You're talking about the maintenance on it?
I'm talking about what they were.
Return.
Return.
Right.
That the reimbursement was gonna majorly drop.
Right.
And then the bearing went out.
And then we couldn't get a maintenance contract anymore. That was any of.
And.
At first, it was really good, and then it just.
I just wish some of that information would have been out there when we were taking it down.
Oh.
Our.
I.
Wanted it generated over.
Yeah, I feel like that would have been good information to have out there.
I could, I could print that report off now even.
Well, it doesn't.
Take no time at all.
It doesn't matter, Jackie. I've already taken the.
No, because I have all that, I would all quoted to one quote. I could go back from the beginning and would have.
No, I just, you know, it was, yeah.
Yeah, at the end, spitballing, it's gonna be like an eighty thousand dollar repair, and the payback is gonna be like twelve thousand dollars.
That's why, yeah.
And, and the, and the eighty thousand dollar repair was only one item to repair on an old window. What's gonna be next?
But initially, it was, it was really good.
But what did it cost us to take it down? Wasn't it like?
Fifty grand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was not a small.
But the, over the years, it was, it was positive.
We still came out, we still came out.
But if you don't know those, if you're not publicizing those numbers, it's hard for the community to understand.
Which this, this, I mean, I would, I would be a hundred percent in favor of this if there was nothing upfront, there was nothing maintenance.
That maintenance cost is a trouble piece for me, yeah.
And there was nothing, there was nothing at the end when they need to go away.
And that was the intent. That, that was, in their presentation, that's what they said, so I'm surprised to see this. Maintenance will be paid by PAS, so I would recommend defer action on this until we get that clarified, because.
We'll check on Tyler's question.
Because, yeah, because I, I think.
How long have we stuck with fifty percent of that?
Forward reimbursed.
I can't imagine it to be very long, but at the same time.
You want a document at the time.
Hundred percent interest.
Yep.
Couple months.
Turns into a year, two years.
Yeah.
No money, even hardly no return. But when we got the money.
Well, and I thought they were gonna put a fence around it.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, like, how do you, that's, that was my question. How do you mow around it? How do you, are we gonna be trimming out there around it? Is it gonna have rocks to the edge of the fence? I mean.
Yeah, but that's.
Because that's gonna be an issue for a maintenance department, you know? So I kinda think that that should be asked.
I just, I would take action to defer action. Motion to defer.
For number three payment, number six payments.
Yep.
And Clint, you plan on going back to him?
Yep. Absolutely. So I do, I would take action to defer tonight, and then we can revisit at a later date.
Move to defer action until a later date due to unknowns on payments and maintenance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer this to a later date. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. Number eleven, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
No one wants to leave?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We're adjourned.